Call a meeting in order.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Surely you've had a chance to take role.
I've taken role. Everybody is present, and you have a call.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to personal appearances. The first item on the agenda this evening is the Carney Hole Optimist Club's request of the Board of Aldermen's permission to close East Washington Street between South Grove Street and Jefferson Street on September 4th, 2023, to hold the annual Labor Day races. I believe Connie Crawford is here to address the board.
Yeah.
You have the floor. Go ahead.
I'm Connie Crawford, representing the Optimist Club. We typically have Labor Day races on Monday, Labor Day every year. It's a tradition that's been going on for somewhere around 100 years. If you're not familiar with it, the kids in the area come, they bring their bikes, skates, tennis shoes, and they race from the bottom of the hill to the top of the hill. We start as young as one-year-old if they're walking, and we do little short races, and we make them longer as the age group gets older. We end it with a big egg toss at the end, and the adults get to participate in that. So, we would like to close the street. Our event usually takes place from 10:00 a.m. to about noon. That's when the crowd clears out. We'd like to close the street around 9:00 o'clock so we can start getting ready and allow for the people to start gathering on the side, on the sides of the, or the parking and stuff.
Attended the event myself many times as a kid.
Yes, you have.
I would take my 50-cent pieces and go to Video Depot or the pharmacy for a nice couple of scoops of ice cream. So, a good, well-attended event. The only question I have from, and this is really a staff question, is if we've been requiring other organizations that shut down city streets to provide insurance and have proper street barriers, if we're going to require the same for the Optimus Club?
The city has the street barriers that they can use, and yes, they are required to have liability insurance.
So, we are work, we're currently working on the insurance. It's not a problem to get the city added to the policy for the letter that you need. We should have that by Friday, if that'll work this week. Where, how do we access the barriers? Will they just be put in place for us, or do we need to pick them up somewhere?
We can talk about that on Friday, if that's okay.
Okay.
And the street department will provide them for you.
Okay.
Are there any other questions from the board?
No.
If not, could we entertain a motion to approve the Carney Hole Optimist Club request to close down East Washington Street between South Grove and Jefferson Street on September 4th, 2023, from roughly 9:00 a.m. to noon for their annual event?
I make a motion to approve this. I think it's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you for, and your club for continuing to put on that event over here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item under personal appearance is Alex Beatty. Did I pronounce your last name correct, Alex?
Yes, sir.
Okay, Alex Beatty.
Most people don't get it right.
All right. Speaking on behalf of Steve Neese, a 1903 Meadow Lane Code of Ordinance violation for a trailer parked in the road, staff did extend a, extension granted through September 9th, 2023. You have the floor?
All right, honorable members of the board, appreciate your time. So, you know, as we know, average human attention spans nine seconds. Is, sorry, average human attention spans 8.25 seconds. Goldfish is nine seconds, so I'm gonna try and keep this real short. So, basically, my name's Alex Beatty. I'm here on behalf of Steve Neese at 1903 Meadow Lane regarding his purported violation of a trailer and yard code, city code. And so, the first thing I want to do is let's just go ahead and read just a couple sentences of the code in regards to what he's violated, so, or allegedly violated. So, Section 405 dot 180A dot 6, parking on lawn areas. The parking of any vehicle shall not occur on lawn areas. Unpaved public rights of way or other unpaved locations in District RR, R1, R2, and R3, parking shall be limited to areas that are hard surface and shall generally be located in close relationship to the garage or otherwise vehicle-oriented portion of the premises so that the lawn may be maintained in grass, trees, and shrubs. Then it goes on to talk about semi-trucks and stuff, and we're not really interested in that. So, what I wanted to say here is that while it may appear that Steve is in maybe violation of the code, if you only look at the first couple sentences, if you look at the entire code in relation to this matter, the intention behind the law, the spirit of the law, is about maintaining an aesthetic lawn and maintaining a beautiful and aesthetic city of Carney. Right? And so, legal research, by the online jury research update, that, I've touched the length, length, but basically, it talks about how there have been a lot of cases that show that somebody can be in violation of the letter of, letter of law, but not the spirit of the law, and not incur culpability. And this is one of those cases, right? So, Ms. Sheila, if you wouldn't mind, just, do they all have those pictures?
Yes.
So, just while you guys look at those pictures, I kind of just want to address, as I wrap it up. So, why am I speaking? Why is Steve not speaking? Why am I here? So, Steve, you know, he's a model citizen when it comes to maintaining his trees, his lawns, and his roads. He's very frustrated, very surprised. If you guys ever needed to take newcomers to Carney and say, this is what a lawn needs to look like when you move here, all you gotta do is drive by Steve's house, take a look at his lawn, pristine lawn, right? So, that being said, I'm here because Steve is real frustrated, and he, I just offered him to sit on the sidelines, and I'm just talking about this, this forum. So, in conclusion, I would like to request that either today the, the violation be dropped, or we talk about this later, because Steve is not in violation of the intention behind why this was created, and I just appreciate you guys listening.
Thank you. Unless the, the board will make a motion, there's no proposed ordinance change to be placed in front of the board this evening, so thank you for being here and sharing your, your thoughts. Anything from the board?
So, I've read this ordinance, and I'll deal with this every day. The problem I have is that the verbiage of our ordinance under 405 point 180A2 talks about RV, boat, trailer storage, and then it talks about recreational kit, equipment, and vehicles such as boats, camping trailers, or motorhomes. What they've got is not a recreational vehicle. It's not a motorhome. And I think if, if somebody is to drive around town and, and look specifically for the utility trailers, where, we need to hire somebody full-time, because they're all over. And I've got probably half a dozen of them and, or more in my neighborhood. So, I think we need to revisit this, this section of the ordinance, because this is not a recreational vehicle. It's a utility trailer.
But it does mention trailers, doesn't it?
It, it talks about trailer storage, but then if you go on past that...
If he's having it sit in his yard, that's a trailer storage. He's storing that trailer on his lawn.
But if you go past that, it says, "Storage of recreational equipment and vehicles such as boats, camping trailers, or motorhomes."
It also mentions trailers. He's got a trailer in his yard. Now, I mean, I'm not arguing one way or another. I'm just saying, you're saying that it's, it's not a, an RV trailer or something like this, or camper, whatever. I get that, but it does say that it's a trailer, and it is a trailer. Regardless what kind of trailer it is, it's still a trailer. I mean, right or wrong, and I'm not trying to argue one way or another. I'm just saying that it is a trailer, so.
I will stand by the fact that I think we need to revisit this ordinance and, and take a look at how the verbiage of it. I can tell you that where I work, it, it's worded very similar to this. We're not going to go after these type of trailers, partly because there's a fine line on where you can stand to document a violation. You can't cross on the private property to document a complaint, and, and so that's the other thing. I don't know, do we know where this was documented from? Was it documented from the streets?
From the street.
Okay. So, I, I think we need to revisit the, the ordinance and take a look at it. Like I said, I've got, I've got half dozen, dozen of them in my neighborhood alone, and I think every one of us, no matter where we're at, I don't, you know, if you've got an HOA against it, I think you're going to see these trailers, so.
I, I would just like to point out, Alderman Lehman, if you look at under our ordinance, 405 180A subsection 6, it specifically says, "No parking of any vehicle shall occur on lawn areas." So, I understand what you're saying, how A2 says RV, boat, and/or trailer storage, and then it specifically talks about specific, but the code does clearly state that no vehicle shall, you know, no parking on any lawn, only on, on paved, hard surface, in proximity to garage and stuff, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I say something?
Sure.
That, that, that goes on to say, "So that the lawn may be maintained in grass, trees, and shrubs." This trailer is used to carry his lawnmower, to mow his lawn, sometimes his son's lawn. It's not, it's used for, it's, the trailer purpose is literally for maintaining the trees, shrubs, and lots of things.
Understand.
Yeah.
Any other discussion from the board on this topic? All right, thank you for being here.
Yes, sir. What would, what would mean to be the next step?
Uh, next step would be, it would be up to this board to make any, recommend staff to make any changes to our, our ordinance, and it doesn't sound like that's something the majority of the board is, is interested in doing at this time.
Yes, sir. So, does that mean that the next step is that the trailer needs to be removed?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend that the homeowner would follow our, our current ordinances and, and letters from city staff.
Good. You say your time?
Thank you. Next item for discussion is a consent agenda. I'm sorry?
We can't hear you.
You can't hear me, okay. The consent agenda, any questions or items of discussion on the consent agenda this evening? See if none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll move on to ordinances. The first item we're going to review this evening is a motion approving Bill Number 262023, presented by Tom O'Leary, our police chief, an ordinance authorizing, an ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Transportation, Highway Safety and Traffic Division for federal grant funds in the amount of $64,226.04 in approving the revision of the fiscal year 2024 adopted city budget. Chief O'Leary?
Yeah. Board, I came to you back on March the 20th, presented an ordinance to you, give permission to submit the LODO grant in the amount of $155,079.67. We did submit the grant. We did not receive that amount, but we did receive $64,226 that will go toward our e-ticket program, help us transition, go into the e-ticketing, you know, with the grant. We're going to wind up with a bunch of new equipment instead of kind of unchanging our old stuff, and, and that should really help us transition into the e-ticket.
Any questions from the board? Chief, did, did you write that grant, or did somebody on staff?
Derek Tager wrote the grant.
Derek Tager. Well, please pass along our appreciation and, and congratulations on receiving that grant. If there are no questions, if we could read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Transportation, Highway Safety and Traffic Division for federal grant funds in the amount of $64,226.04 and approving the revision of the fiscal year 2024 adopted city budget.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with the Missouri Department of Transportation, Highway Safety and Traffic Division for federal grant funds in the amount of $64,226.04 and approving the revision of the fiscal year 2024 adopted city budget.
So moved.
Second. Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance, ordinance passes. Next item is motion approving Bill Number 272023, presented by Tom O'Leary, our police chief, an ordinance approving the participation with the Mid-America Regional Council Greater Kansas City Regional Resource Sharing Agreement. Chief?
A regional resource sharing agreement. It's through Homeland Security and MARK. In this region, a bunch of cities came together to help the resource sharing agreement through MARK, Independence, Johnson County, Kansas, KCMO, Leavenworth, Kansas, Lee Summit, Leith, Oakland Park, Flat County, Windup County, are kind of the forefathers of, but the hope is that everybody's going to join in on the regional resource sharing. The sharing agreement is, is not just personnel, it can be equipment, it can be, yeah, anything. It actually crosses state lines. It doesn't replace our existing mutual aid. It's just kind of more well-put-together mutual aid in the event that we, you know, you know, something terrible happened.
Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? We read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving participation with the Mid-America Regional Council Greater Kansas City Regional Resource Sharing Agreement.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving participation with the Mid-America Regional Council Greater Kansas City Regional Resources Sharing Agreement.
Move to approve on second reading.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, and ordinance passes. Thank you, chief. Next item is a motion approving Bill Number 282023, presented by Donnie Smith, our utility and street director, an ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 355, Title III, Traffic Codes, Schedule II, Parking Restrictions. Donnie, you have the floor?
We tried to update our new parking ordinances. They haven't been updated since 1984. They, they don't address fire hydrants on certain streets. I've talked to PD and the fire department, which we added Meadow Brook as a major thoroughfare. We've added Regency Drive as a major thoroughfare that is hard to traverse traffic with parking on roads, and we just kind of updated and tweaked the 14th, 16th, and, and Southbrook Parkway. A lot of the roads that it addressed, the, hadn't been built in 84, and they extended it out, and we had issues with fire hydrants being on the side of the road that they should be, no parking, so we had to kind of dial that in and, and address it and move it to the other side in certain areas, so that we're not impeding the fire hydrants on those streets also.
So, the proposed change is to add Meadow Brook Drive and Regency Drive in entirety, no parking, and then...
Regency is just on the west side.
West side where the fire hydrants are.
Right.
And then 14th, 16th, and Southbrook Parkway already had no parking ordinances. The newer parts of those roads, you simply are correcting it to where the no parking's on the side of the street where there's fire hydrants for public safety purposes.
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood all the, the proposed changes.
Mayor, and also Watson Drive.
Yeah.
Okay. I missed Watson Drive.
I don't, we've never been, I don't know, you hold your hand up.
You're not, yeah, this, this isn't a public input at this time, so you're not permitted to speak.
Sheila invited me to come.
Yeah, public's always welcome to attend our meetings, but it's not a public input item at this time.
So, when I sent you an email, I asked if you wanted to make a public appearance, so that happens at the beginning of the meeting, so I didn't put you on the agenda because I didn't get an email back, and maybe you sent one, but I didn't see it, so.
But I will tell you, I'm, I'm... I will, I will break the rule, and I, I'm not one to not allow a, a resident to speak, but a, after the board has an item to, to discuss, I'll, I'll be happy to allow you a few moments.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, that goes along with this, Mr. Mayor, because I, I would like to kind of postpone this and make it more of an open, because there's going to be a lot of changes, and a lot of people that are on these streets, I think that they need to come, not necessarily to speak against it, but to know what's going on, because when we were talking about doing this, I had a lot of calls from different people on 14th, 15th Street down there, and I'm not saying we shouldn't do these things, what I'm saying is, I think that the public needs to be here where they know what the new changes are and that kind of thing, except just all of a sudden there's signs out here and people are getting tickets. So, I, I think we need to have a public hearing type thing on it to where we can get some feedback, but not only feedback, but educate as well.
Did staff provide any notification to these residents?
Did for 14th through 16th and Southbrook Parkway. The Meadow Brook has been added, but no, they have not been notified, and Regency has not been notified.
Okay.
And Regency's going to be a big one.
It might make sense to postpone, just...
Are you making a formal motion to, to postpone the proposed ordinance change until we can have a public hearing? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, yeah.
I'll second that.
So, we have a motion on the floor to oppose a proposed, to postpone the proposed ordinance change until we have a public hearing, have a first and second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? So, when would you guys like to?
We can put on the next one, I mean, we just gotta let people know that, you know, what's that, the 23rd?
19th, I think?
19th, that's our next meeting.
18th.
18th. I mean, we could put on the next one, but just, you know, I don't know, however we get it out that they come and talk about it, because especially on, Regency's going to, they, I mean, they park on both sides of the road, the whole thing, now that Regency's going to be a big one. I think that we need that to...
Will our fire marshal be available at 10, on the 18th?
Should be.
Okay.
Yeah, because there probably will be some questions for you. Yeah, and I'm not trying to be a stickler, I'm just, that's a lot of people that also they're going to be upset when this starts happening, they need to kind of know what's going on.
Yeah, totally, yeah.
I think they're also going to be upset when their house is on fire, and they can't gain access to fire hydrant too, I mean, but, so, but I understand the opportunity to give, to, to provide proper notice, and I also understand giving a lot of residents opportunity to speak. We've, we postponed the, the, any consideration to change ordinance to our next meeting. It'll be the 18th at 6:30 p.m. We're also going to publish a public hearing at that point, so any resident would have the opportunity, you wouldn't have to provide notice that you wish to speak, to address the board, will have the opportunity to speak for, against, propose change, and share your thoughts with the board. You're welcome to do that now, or you're also welcome to, to come back on a date.
I thought there were letters sent out, and maybe two times letters were sent out.
We didn't get any letter, and we live in, right in the center, in a cul-de-sac from 14th and 15th. We live on Riley Court. We got no letter.
Riley Court, not affected.
Yes, it does. You have to either go down 14th or 15th to get to Riley Court. I have three elderly people that are health, you know, they have health issues, and as, you know, the fire department, police department, they can't get to our house when you've got both sides of the road blocked.
And it's an S-curve.
So, we need to be involved in it too, with the Kelly Lane, Riley Court, Melissa.
So, so you're, you're requesting your, your streets to be added to consideration?
No, no.
Okay.
Just that we need the letters, because if we don't get these letters too, then we, then how do we know what's going on, really? I mean, I'm the one who actually brought this to Sheila's attention back in February, because of the people with the health conditions that live in my house. Well, and the other people that live on Riley Court will want to know of this too, because they go through the same thing we go through. You can't get down the street. It's not just the health issues, it's just the, the blocking, and you can't see. Kids darting out behind bars, this, this is bad.
Sure. Well, thank you for being here and, and sharing your thoughts with the board. I, I would ask you to please attend our next meeting on the 18th, when we have a full public hearing, and, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll post it on social media, we'll, we'll get it published, and we would welcome your neighbors, anybody else, to come and share their thoughts and concerns with us as well.
I'm back and hosted. Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Next item is a motion approving Bill Number 292023, presented by Eric Marshall, our park director, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a park reservation agreement between the Carney R1 School District, a political subdivision in the city of Carney, Missouri, to host a 5K employee fun run at Jesse James Park. Mr. Marshall?
Uh, this is the same reservation park agreement with the school that was conducted earlier in the springtime. They just want to have a fall fun run on a Saturday, early morning. Hopefully, it's not hot at that time, but they usually are in and out within a couple of hours, and we do not charge, because they are a political subdivision. There will be no fee for the school to use Jesse James Park for their 5K fun run.
Any questions from the board? If we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a park reservation agreement between Carney R1 School District, a political subdivision, and the city of Carney, Missouri, to host a 5K employee fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Motion to approve. I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to sign a park reservation agreement between Carney R1 School District, a political subdivision, and the city of Carney, Missouri, to host a 5K employee fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
Second.
Pull the board, please.
Elderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Elderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, ordinance passes. Next item ordinance is a motion approving Bill Number 302023, presented by our finance director, Kathy Harper, an ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2024 adopted city budget, personnel schedule to authorize one position, a city engineer position. Kathy?
Thank you, Council of the Department Board. The position of the city engineer was originally requested in the fiscal year 202024 budget, but the position was not included in the final adoption, so it was requested but not included. Instead, an assistant utility and street director was added, and that position at this time has not been filled. After further analyzing the city's needs, it has been determined that a city engineer would have a significant impact right now, and this ordinance is to allow, if such a qualified person is found, the hiring of a city engineer. I just want to note, for you all to note, that this is not, this was still would be in the confines of the budget, so this is just simply adding the position.
Any questions from the board? If we could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2024 adopted city budget, personnel schedule, to authorize one city engineer position.
Move to approve on first reading?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only?
An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the fiscal year 2024 adopted An ordinance of the city of Carney, Missouri, amending the fiscal year twenty-twenty-four adopted city budget personnel schedule to authorize one city engineer position.
I make that motion. I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, ordinance passes. Next item is motion approving bill number thirty-one, twenty-two-three, presented by Donnie Smith, our utility and streets director, and ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a change order with Rand Construction Company for the water tower treatment plant filter face piping rehabilitation project in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Donnie?
So this is actually where the line softening trough meets up with the concrete wall that separates them to put it into piping from a trough. Doug with Rand Construction did a test and it leaked, it failed. It was designed and built just as Landfront Nielsen asked to be, but it failed the seal test. So they had to add bolts due to the waviness and the roughness of the concrete and a thicker rubber gasket and some sealing. That's been done on filter four, three and four, and it is holding, and it did correct the situation. So they're asking for this extra money because they had it all together and they had to take it apart and put it back together with the sealant and the thicker gasket. And extra bolts.
Any questions from the board? If we could read the proposed ordinance?
Mayor, may I first? I do want to point out that this is an ordinance because it does require a budget amendment. So there was not enough money that was allocated, and that money will be coming from Fund Twenty. But wanted to make that clear because it's not within the current budget. An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a change order with Rand Construction Company for the water treatment plant filter face piping rehabilitation project in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Motion to approve. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Second reading by title only?
An ordinance authorizing the city administrator to sign a change order with Rand Construction Company for the water treatment plant filter face piping rehabilitation project in the amount of ten thousand six hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Make a motion and second it?
Second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, ordinance passes. We'll move on to resolutions this evening. Motion approving resolution presented by Eric Marshall, our park director, authorizing the mayor to sign a food truck vendor agreement with Kitchens To Go LLC, doing business as Rockalitas. Mexican food to allow onsite food and refreshment, food truck vendor sales at the Pickleball and Skate Park Complex. The other floor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Board. We solicited food vendors for proposals to have their food truck out at the Pickleball and Skate Park Complex. We have heard from many of the people there that when they get done playing at ten o'clock, there's not a lot of businesses, other than the fast food businesses, available for food. And we want to do that as a service as well for when people are out there playing. Rockalitas, we met with them, and if I may add, that when we were discussing food trucks from the get-go, about halfway through, we brought Carolyn in and discussed food trucks as well. But they gave us a proposal where they will offer us a five percent of their gross sales, up to a thousand dollars, and then ten percent after that. Most of the other food, in fact, all of the other food trucks, they want a percentage guarantee per night. And we can't guarantee that in case something would happen where they don't get that quota, and then the city is out and paying the food truck for being there. Rockalitas are excited about being out there. She is a pickleball player too, and we'd like to get this going because our, our league tournaments start tonight.
What timeframe do you expect them to be on site?
They would be on site, she would say, before the patrons get there around five-thirty, because most of the time, our leagues start at six o'clock. They would also be there for tournaments. And open play, and open play is basically when we don't have a league or a tournament going on, so on and so forth.
So this would strictly be for Carney Parks and Rec League Nights and Carney Parks and Rec tournaments?
And other tournaments, when people come to us and want to host a tournament, like a memorial tournament or a fundraising tournament, we would want them on site as well.
How often are the league nights?
We have them Monday through Friday, and they're completely full.
Basically, this food truck will be there every night?
Right.
Right on weekends?
In weekends, if there's tournaments and open play, if there's a lot, like on a Saturday morning. Most of the time with the heat that we're dealing with now, a lot of people go up there early in the morning. By eleven, twelve o'clock, they're gone because of the heat, and then they come back again in the evening time and play as the sun sets. And right now, our, our time is ten P M. The light's dim, and then at ten fifteen, the lights are dark, so.
Looks like the proposed agreement's just through the end of the year.
It is, and then we will revisit how things went pending approval and revisit this again next year.
Are they using our land power? Are they running a generator?
They have a generator that is enclosed on the, on the Rockalitas trailer.
Do you know how loud it is? Because we do have a few residents right there.
I do, and in fact, I went by and took video of myself around ten feet from the actual trailer. And I was talking, and it's a, it's a quiet generator. You're going to hear more noise from the people playing than you are from the generator.
Yeah, I just don't know if it was real loud. That would be a complaint. That would be.
Any additional questions from the board? If not, can we entertain a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a food truck vendor agreement with Kitchens To Go LLC, doing business as Rockalitas, Mexican food, to allow onsite food and refreshments, food truck vendor sales at our Pickleball and Skate Park Complex?
Make a motion to approve it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Proposed? Resolution passes unanimously. Next item is, we have for items of review and presentation, the July twenty-twenty-three monthly financial report. Kathy Harper, our finance director.
Tonight, we're presenting the July Unravelled South Financial Report. So this is the fourth month of the year. We're a third of the way through. You can start to see how we're doing. Everything looks to be in line, revenues and expenditures with what's been anticipated and projected. You know, there's some seasonalities. For example, if you look at revenues under taxes, majority of those taxes are going to come early December and January because property taxes, but you can start to see that things are running around thirty-three percent. Or if it's above or beyond, that those have been anticipated, and also some things we paid early in the fiscal year. I do want to point out, just fortunately, there's a couple of errors on there, and I'm just going to go over them pretty quickly. They're not significant. It's just the calculation of these percentages on some of these later files. Early on, the calculations were corrected, and then the formulas weren't updated, and I noticed that tonight. And my apologies for them not being correct, but I'm just going to briefly go over it. On Fund Thirty-One, you'll see under expenditures, this is a hundred percent, or zero percent has been expended. Same with Fund Thirty-Two, that should be zero percent. Fund Thirty-Three, instead of a hundred, that should be ten point seventeen percent. Fund Thirty-Five should be seventeen point eight percent. And then slowing down a little bit, Fund Fifty-One, seven point three three percent. Fund Fifty-Two, six point four two percent. And Fund Fifty-Three, thirty-three percent. So I just wanted to briefly say that, just for the record, to anyone listening in, you know, where that, those were calculation errors. But the values, the numbers are right, it's just those percentages, so my apologies.
Do you know how the, the use tax, how that's performing, is it performing as expected?
A little bit early to tell, but it looks like it's performing really well. So just looking at these numbers, it looks like it's better, you know, a little bit better than what we anticipated. I did look over at some of the other sales tax revenues too, to try to get in alignment, because you can see that one's a little higher. And I don't have a full picture of what the seasonalities are here in Carney. But as far as use tax is concerned, you know, that one looks like it's performing.
Great. Any other questions?
Yeah, how's sales tax holding up? I mean, because we, I know traffic gets kind of reduced since we got Watson Drive kind of shut down. So that kind of slows down some of that over there, that maybe people would set a shop here, they were coming out of Liberty, they just get stuff from there. Has that dropped off much?
It, it looks like, I don't have a good analysis over several years for Carney, but it looks like it's staying consistent to where it should be. If we're at thirty-three percent through the year, it's a little bit behind, but it depends, some seasons bring in more revenue. So just this time of year, maybe that there's less percentage coming in. So it doesn't look like those are impacted, but I'm going to do some further analysis. There's some information we can get from the Department of Revenue that can be, that's a little more confidential, that we can go through and analyze. Other than that, it's just generalities, but I don't see anything that's significantly concerning.
Because that was something I was concerned about with closing down Watson Drive.
Yeah, yeah. Of course, we always want more, right? But I don't see where it needs to be any alarms just yet, that we're not going to have enough.
Thank you for the report. Next item is the twenty-twenty-three National Community Survey Results, presented by Sheila Rinzin, our city administrator.
And I recorded this earlier today to help with all technical difficulties. And Ryan promised that this would be easier than me trying to get somebody, probably David, to follow along, so.
If that works.
The National Community Survey results are in and have been posted on the city's website. The full survey results report is seventy-nine pages and contains a lot of great information. This information will be helpful for the Board of Aldermen to use during its upcoming priority setting workshop. The survey results also provided information about Carney's livability and about residents' perceptions about governance and city staff, as well as information about resident engagement. This presentation's goal is to summarize residents' perceptions about Carney's livability. We will look at the responses from residents regarding governance and resident engagement in a future presentation. For now, let's talk about what matters most to our residents. Livability is defined as a place that is desirable and where people want to live. Great communities are partnerships of the government, private sector, community-based organizations and residents, all geographically connected. The National Community Survey captures residents' opinions of ten central facets of all communities. Livability is affected by residents' perception of these ten facets. Thanks to all of our residents who responded to the survey, here's what they said. Overall, residents gave the quality of life in Carney a rating of eighty-four percent. Thirty-nine percent rated Carney as a good or excellent place to live, and ninety percent plan to stay here for the next five years. Eighty-five percent rated it as a good or excellent place to raise children, and eighty-six percent of respondents would recommend living in Carney to someone who asked. This slide shows Carney residents' rating of importance for each of the facets of livability, listed in order of importance for residents, from most important to least important, along with residents' perception of quality for each facet. It is helpful to know what is most important to residents and whether they perceive the facet to be higher or lower quality. Facets with a quality rating of less than sixty-three percent are perceived by residents to be lower quality than those with a rating of sixty-three percent or more. When these facets are graphed, they provide a picture of Carney's strengths and challenges. Facets of livability closer to the red diagonal line are those where performance ratings more closely match with residents' priorities. Looking at the diagonal line, the residents' perception of the quality of safety and of inclusivity and engagement in Carney is in close alignment with residents' priorities for the two. The quality of the natural environment is well above resident expectations, and Parks and Recreation in the city is also performing above expectations. The quality of mobility, education, arts and culture, health and wellness, community design, utilities, and economy in Carney are all perceived to be performing under resident expectations. Facets scoring closest to the lower right-hand corner of the matrix, utilities and community design, the two that are higher in importance to residents but perceived to be lower in quality, should be investigated closely to see what changes could be made to improve their performance. Let's take a deeper look at the five facets that Carney ranked as more important. Safety in Carney was rated by eighty-five percent of residents positively. Virtually all residents reported feeling very or somewhat safe in Carney during the day, both in the city's commercial areas and in their neighborhoods. Eighty-eight percent reported feeling very or somewhat safe from violent crime and from fire, flood, or other natural disasters. And eighty percent reported feeling safe from property crime. Residents were also asked to rate safety-related services in Carney, and ninety-four percent positively rated fire services. Ninety-two percent gave good marks to ambulance and EMS services, and eighty-five percent rated police services in the city positively. Safety ranks as residents' highest priority, with ninety-two percent expressing it as extremely or very important. To make improvements to the quality of safety services, the city could look at improving code enforcement, emergency preparedness, animal control, and crime prevention. Seventy-two percent of residents rated the quality of overall economic health in Carney as positive. Sixty-three percent approve of the quality of business and service establishments in the city, and fifty-one percent rated economic development services as excellent or good. Seventy-two percent of residents positively rated Carney's overall image or reputation, but only forty-four percent of respondents gave positive marks to Carney as a place to work or visit. Economic health was identified by eighty-nine percent of residents as a priority in the coming two years, and was tied as the second highest ranked priority for residents. There are many opportunities to improve resident satisfaction with economic health in Carney. More than two-thirds of residents cited shopping and employment opportunities and the vibrancy of commercial areas in Carney as fair or poor. And more than half of residents rated the availability of affordable quality food and the variety of business and service establishment in the city as fair or poor. Sixty-two percent of residents rated the quality of overall utility infrastructure in Carney as positive. Seventy-four percent rated stormwater management services as excellent or good, and seventy-two percent of respondents gave positive marks to Carney's utility billing services. Utility infrastructure was identified by eighty-nine percent of residents as a priority in the coming two years, and was tied as the second highest ranked priority for residents. There is one standout opportunity to improve resident satisfaction with utilities. Only thirty-two percent of residents rated accessibility to affordable high-speed internet in Carney positively. Sixty-three percent of residents rated the quality of community design as positive. Seventy-eight percent of residents ranked Carney's overall appearance as excellent or good. Sixty-two percent ranked preservation of the historical and cultural character of the community positively. And fifty-eight percent positively rated Carney neighborhoods as well-designed. Community design was identified by seventy-seven percent of residents as a priority in the coming two years, and was ranked by residents as their fourth highest priority. There are several opportunities to improve resident satisfaction with community, community design, like accessibility to a variety of housing options and the availability of affordable quality housing in the city. quality housing in the city, well-planned commercial growth, and the addition of public places where people want to hang out and spend time together. 70% of residents rated the quality of Parks and Recreation opportunities in Carney as positive. 79% of residents ranked Parks in the city as excellent or good, and 73% rated the availability of paths and walking trails positively. 62% positively rated opportunities to attend special events and festivals in the city, and only half positively rated opportunities to participate in social events and activities. Parks and Rec was identified by 76% of residents as a priority in the coming two years, and it is also one of the facets where quality in Carney seems to be slightly outperforming resident priorities, looking at the graph from earlier. That being true, residents' responses indicate that their perception of the quality of Parks and Recreation in Carney would be improved with the addition of a recreation center or facility in Carney, which would allow for more recreation programs and class opportunities and increased fitness opportunities. In April, voters will have the opportunity to increase their satisfaction of Parks and Rec opportunities with the addition of an indoor pool and either a recreation center or outdoor pool. That survey is still underway through the end of this month. The recreation center option is slightly ahead in that survey, and that is not surprising based on what residents said here. Thank you for listening to this presentation. There is a lot of information to digest and consider just in time for the upcoming mayor and Board of Aldermen Priority Setting Session that will be taking place on Tuesday, September 5th at the Carney School District Administrative Offices, beginning at 5:00 PM.
All right. Thank you for that report. Only item I have under Mayor's Communications is I will, I believe Eric Marshall, our park director, has an announcement to make to the board regarding the splash pad.
Sure. We are going to keep the Splash Park open on weekends once the anticipated, the set time that we were supposed to close, the Splash Park is Labor Day itself. We are going to keep that open two more weekends on Saturdays and Sundays. It would be through the Jesse James Festival weekend, and we'll keep that open on Saturday and Sundays, so.
I think that's a good idea.
All right. Thank you for that report.
We'll make sure we get that posted to let people know.
We'll move on to the city administrators' report.
The only things I have are upcoming meetings. Just a reminder that the Board of Aldermen Priority Setting Session Workshop will be Tuesday, September 5th. It will not be at City Hall. We will be holding it at the Carney School District Administrative Offices, and that session will begin at 5:00 PM. And then the next regular board meeting will be Monday, September 18th at 6:30 PM.
They moved the district office, right? It's in the Rosemont Building?
Yes.
Yes.
We'll move to Alderman Discussion. Alderman Spencer?
I have nothing this evening.
Alderman Holt?
I don't have anything either.
Alderman Lehman?
Other than, I just want to make sure that all of our employees are staying safe and staying hydrated with extreme heat. Looks like it's going to be amongst us for at least a week. I know we've got a lot of employees out there that don't have an opportunity to get out of it, so just please take safety precautions and make sure you stay hydrated, so.
On that topic, I'm going to wrap it up. Department heads, you have the ability to change starting times so they can possibly work in cooler hours? I know that's not going to help much this week, but trying to keep your team healthy and hydrated. Alderman Barker?
Nothing this evening.
We do have an executive session. Notice that this meeting is a closed section per RSMO 610021 Subsection 1, Legal Actions Causes of Legal Action or Litigation Evolving a Public Governmental Body and Any Confidential or Privileged Communication Between a Public Governmental Body or Its Representatives and Its Attorneys, and 610021 Subsection 2, Leasing, Purchase, Sale of Real Estate by a Public Governmental Body Where Public Knowledge of the Transaction Might Adversely Effect a Legal Consideration Therefore, and 610021 Subsection 12, To Discuss Matters Pretending to Negotiated Contracts. And just a reminder, our meeting will be adjourned once we conclude our executive session, so if we can consider a motion to go into executive session at 7:25 PM.
So moved.
So you?
Roll call though, please.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderwoman Barker?
Aye.
Votes unanimous, we will enter into executive session. Everybody have a good evening. Thank you.